Let me call this meeting the City Commission on Monday, December 11th, 2017 to order. Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plourd?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana?
Here.
Mayor Baldini?
Here.
All right. Any announcements? We have, we had a list, I won't go through them right now, tonight, but we do have vacancies.
Approve the agenda.
Thank you. Approve the agenda. Skip that. Let me approve the agenda. Let me make a suggestion here, and let the minutes reflect that there's a correction on item 1E in the consent agenda. That should be 100,000, okay? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Plourd?
I move that we approve the agenda as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, say no. Thank you. Okay. Let's, announcements, there's a series of openings for positions which are posted at the beginning of the meeting, but I think I'll let those go tonight, and we will revisit them at our meeting next week. Just to mention, we will be meeting again next Monday, because we have to hold two meetings by charter a month, and the following Monday is Christmas, and we thought attendance would be sort of short and bleak. So, we are meeting again next Monday, okay? At this point in the agenda, let me, this is time for public comment. If you're interested in addressing the commission, please come forward, provide your name, your address, the community that you are resident of, and you have three minutes. And if you also want to speak on, excuse me, another agenda item, indicate at that time, okay? For those who are applicants for the position of City Commission, there will be a time set aside for you, okay? So you don't have to do that, all right? Okay. Anyone wishing to address the commission?
Hi.
Just come here to the center podium, okay?
Is this for this number two?
Pardon me?
Um, is this regarding the person who's running that I can address it for?
You can.
Do whatever I want.
Whatever you want.
Okay, great. Okay.
Give us your name and your address.
Sure. My name is Suzanne Wickland. I live at 540 West Barriga Avenue. I'm here because I'm supporting Aaron Andrus. He's, wants to be on the commission, and the reason why I'm supporting him is, one in five people in our community have a disability. This is obviously a large number, and people all around the world know that Marquette is a great place to mountain bike. It's a great place. We have, on the roads, we have biking lanes, which is wonderful, but I want us to look at the people who are the disabled people that are in wheelchairs and are not able to leave their homes, or are not able to go places after 6:00 because the buses stop running. I think it's very important that we have someone on our City Commission who's going to represent these people in our community. It is a large population that has not been represented, and it needs to be done. Even when you look at the downtown area of Marquette, you cannot go down there in a wheelchair and get into stores. They don't have automatic buttons, so, and a lot of people can't even go to the movies at night. They can't go on a date with someone, because if they're in a wheelchair and they don't have their own vehicle, they can't get up there, because the buses end at 6:00. So, I'll leave it at that, because I only have three minutes, but I think it's very important to have somebody with a disability on the City Commission. And I want to go over a few of the things that Aaron has been involved in while living in Marquette. He's very active. He's on the statewide independent living council. He was appointed by the Governor's Office, Market City Board of Zoning and Appeals, Market City Planning Commission, the Superior Alliance for Independent Living, the Upper Peninsula Commission for Area Progress, the State of Michigan Barrier Free Design Board. He has been an advocate for quite a few years now, trying to push things in Marquette to get things that, people with disabilities, that they have the same ability to love and enjoy Marquette like the rest of us do, who are not in a wheelchair or who are not in a walker. So, I guess, I want you to please consider him. It's a one-year position, and I think it would mean a lot to people with disabilities. There would have been a lot of people here in wheelchairs, but they can't get here, because there's no bus running after 6:00. So you don't see anybody here supporting Aaron that's in a chair or in a walker. So, I am speaking for a lot of those people, so, that's it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Good evening. Brian Kerrigan, 824 High Street, Marquette. Dear City Commissioners, City Mayor, I strongly encourage the Marquette City Commission to install or appoint Mr. Giarangelli for the replacement of City Commissioner Cam Benzie. And, I, like many others in the community, feel that is the appropriate thing to do due to the proximity of the election, and we understand that the Charter says that you will be allowed to appoint, but the time that Ms. Cam Benzie left and the election was run, so with that being said, I would urge the Commission to consider selecting the highest vote getter in that recent election, Mr. Giarangelli. He spent countless hours campaigning, running through the electoral process, meeting people, listening to concerns within this community, and all while attending college and raising a young family. His concerns are those of, like those of us in this community, working men and women that live and reside in this community. We believe he would be a spokesman and a voice for a lot of working members residing and living within this, the city. I respectfully call the Commission to make the appointment. I understand the process, that invitations were put out for people to run. My question, again, as stated in the last meeting, many ran in the election, many did not, or chose not to. My question might be, why didn't they run in an election like Mr. Giarangelli did, and rather than waiting to possibly be appointed now? I think that there's a lot of virtue to the candidates that put themselves into the process, that ran through that process, and the weight and measure of that, I think, should be critical in the decision-making of your appointment. So, the electoral process is something we must all respect and believe in for democracy to work within this community. Thank you for your time, and I would like to reserve time to speak on this item, item two.
Bob Anderson would like to reserve some time later. My address is 810 West Magnetic. Thank you.
My name is Joe Rose IV. I live on 540 East Michigan. I'd like to reserve time to speak on item number two.
My name is Connor Rock. I live at 1701 Lincoln Ave, Apartment 41, and I would like to reserve time to speak on item number two as well.
Michael Williams. I live at 424 West Barriga. Am I still allowed to speak right now, or do I have to reserve time? Okay. I'm here on behalf, as a resident of Marquette, and also on behalf of Marquette-area Democratic Socialists, to endorse Mr. Giarangelli for City Commission. I think that, like Mr. Kerrigan said, it's the democratic thing to do. He came in fourth. He should take his own spot. And also, not just to repeat everything that the previous speaker said, but also to highlight that, to my understanding, Mr. Giarangelli is one of the only people who ran who really addressed housing inequality in Marquette, and the rising housing prices in Marquette. And, some of you might know, Harvard released a study earlier this year showing that Marquette has had, Marquette County has had some of the highest increases in housing prices since 2000 in the entire region, in fact, the highest in the Great Lakes region. And, hearing somebody even address that in a substantive way, on behalf of people who work and rent and struggle in Marquette, has been really refreshing. So, I respectfully ask that you all give Mr. Giarangelli the empty spot. Thank you.
Katie Bargland. I live at 204 West Michigan Street, and I would like to reserve some time to speak on item number two.
Bob Cambenzie, 306 North Sixth Street, Marquette. I'll reserve some time for item number two, but I may not use it. You guys got a tough job tonight. Probably tougher than you might have had four weeks ago. Certainly you have, you have nine candidates there that came forth. I read all of the resumes and what they all presented. You have nine qualified people, and how are you going to pick one of them, I guess? You know, some comments were made at your meeting four weeks ago about the top three vote-getters, and then there being a big gap down to number four, number five, and number six. And yet, I guess, as we look at the candidates that you have who applied before you now, two of them got votes from the people, and seven of them didn't run in the election. So, a couple of you made the point that, you know, there was this big disparity, and what, how do you look at this now? One of the things that I noticed when reading the resumes, it sounded like a lot of people said were really willing to listen, and to, to give our votes and our consideration for what's best for the people of the city of Marquette. I think more than a listener, what we need is somebody who will really speak up. The seat that's being filled was held by a person who was not afraid to speak up. That person put a tremendous amount of time into everything that came before the City Commission. She was not a follower. That's the one thing which, that we really don't need, is just another follower. And that, I guess that was kind of a concern four weeks ago, and it sounded like you guys really weren't even going to maybe consider any of the other people that ran, and I think a lot of people were thinking, oh, they're probably just going to go out and get one of their old buddies from somewhere. Well, kind of amazingly, I don't think any of the nine that filled in the applications now are, are really, could qualify as good old buddies, but I guess we'll see what you do. Good luck. Good luck to all of us.
Frank Chaveroito to speak on item two, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. A new row of townhouses at Flounders blocks pretty much the rest of the view. Public concern was ignored at every phase by a board that's continued to answer stupid with more stupid, while the evidence is as plain as day to all who pass by. Similarly, this board failed to open the safe portions of Lighthouse Park despite our late fall and the ease of doing so. Shame on you. November 27th, Mr. Plourd said, "I offered this board nothing it could use." Comments included ADA walkability, instating people with disabilities on the commission, saving money on an audio system, chemicals migrating in the Lake Superior, the danger of glass items in green bags, saving our shore from the next storm, not approving items before they appear on agendas, and not adding items at meeting time that information could have been provided for. There's a lot to use if they'd only listen. Too much time is spent clarifying Mr. Plourd's misinterpretations, only for him to further exemplify his inability to digest clearly stated comments. If he'd listened, this time would be spent on items of greater public interest. My function is not to give Mr. Plourd anything he can use, because he's fixated on personal attack instead of addressing concerns. I've made clear that because this board refuses to listen, I'm here to inform the public on land use matters and about this board's systematic mishandling of the public, with examples on record too numerous to list. All Mr. Plourd's November 27th attack accomplished was to bolster my assertions. He merrily attacked, having not considered what he'd heard clearly stated. His absorption is analogous with reading every other clause of a book and pretending he got the whole picture. Can't be done. He zeroes in on clauses that he can finagle a smart-sounding answer for, ignoring parts of the comments for which he has no response. Please, Mr. Chair, work out a solution behind the scenes. His behavior benefits no one. You're on the ball enough to realize what I said versus his responses. Remember, I'm the one who wants the record delved into word by word, not Mr. Plourd. Not to give an enemy advice, but he'd sound more intelligible if he'd review the record and base his responses on what was actually said, instead of what he wished was said. I pay this board the respect of providing specific examples while considering opponents' viewpoints, which isn't the respect we're lent. Mr. Plourd ought to have deduced that the alleged illegal interruption victimized another man, at least by the time it was clarified for him. The law dictates that I cannot sue for a crime against someone else. He mentioned, quote, "A thinly veiled threat that I'd sue if they decided to do anything like that again. That's how it was worded," he said, end quote. The record reveals that I said, quote, "Know what you're doing before you cut someone off. It will be run by an attorney, and if he recommends a lawsuit, we will pursue justice." That's different from what Mr. Plourd recalled. Item two, please.
Any other person wishing to speak under public comment?
Mike Tebow. I live at 590 M-35 Gwynne, Michigan. I'm here representing people that live in the city, vote in the city, that I work with and for. Just a quick comment, I think everybody in this room tonight can agree that we spend a lot of time and effort trying to get people out to the polls to vote. I think to totally ignore that process, and I have firsthand knowledge of how hard Tony Giarangelli worked, this community, to get 1,300 votes. How do we go back and encourage people that the democratic process works if they go out and vote, when we totally ignore that? So, I'm urging you Commissioners tonight, to give strong consideration to appointing the fourth-place vote getter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Anyone else? Not here.
I'm Melinda Britton, and I actually am not in Marquette, so I don't know if I'm not allowed to speak. Okay, cool. 131 Aspen Drive, Marquette. Harvey.
Harvey, okay.
It's whatever. I just want to say that I appreciate you guys. I wrote a, this is awkward, I wrote a email to all of you. I'm sure you guys probably all got it, hopefully, but I just wanted to say thanks again for taking the time to read that. I also want to say that I feel like, I'll just say, like, as a female, like, I look on this board, and I don't see a lot of variety. I mean, like, hi, Sarah, you know, but like, that's pretty much it. And I feel like, you know, there's, I don't know exact percentages of men and women in Marquette County, but I don't feel like there is a clear representation of females on the board. I mean, you guys can even just look side to side, okay? And I really think that I would really appreciate if you guys would consider, you know, my letter was on behalf of Candace Blackstone Larson. I'm also really good friends with Jenna Smith, and I would really appreciate if you guys would consider not only bringing up a female, but somebody who really has a pulse on what's going on in our community in, I guess, younger families. These are people that own businesses locally, these are people that love our community, that have come to love our community, that are maybe bringing some different perspectives, and Mr. Cambenzie said, you know, I want, you know, you guys need somebody that's not just sitting back and stuff, and I know two of the women that are, have applied, and they are the most wonderful and fierce women that I know, and I just would really appreciate if you guys would consider maybe going outside of the awesome elderly men, wise men, come on, box, whatever you want to call yourself, box, and considering, you know, women, if you weren't, if it wasn't for women, you wouldn't be here, so, that's all I got to
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, let me close this section, and we'll go to the unfinished business, and I would ask the clerk.
Consent. Consent.
Oh, that's right. How could I forget consent agenda? All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented? Pardon me? That's where I got to get you. Yes, okay.
I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Support for that? Commissioner Stonehouse? For the consent agenda, all those, and we have to take a roll call on this one, because the fourth item is, requires a resolution on our part, okay? So clerk, would you do that?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plourd?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campana?
Yes.
Mayor Baldini?
Yes. Six zero. Okay. All right, thank you. Now, let's go to unfinished business, and I would ask the clerk to read the directive for City Commission appointment process.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. A City Commission vacancy was created on November 13th, when the Commission accepted the resignation of Commissioner Sarah Cambenzie, following her November 7th election to the Michigan House of Representatives. Under the provisions of the Market City Charter, the City Commission has 60 days in which to fill a vacant, vacancy via appointment. The Commission voted unanimously on November 3rd to accept applications for all interested parties, and to consider the applications and appoint a new commissioner at tonight's meeting. The application was made available on the city's website and could be picked up at the clerk's office. Applications were accepted from November 14th until 5:00 PM on November 30th. In that time, the city clerk received nine applications from interested parties. The applicants listed alphabetically are Aaron Michael Andrus, David Bradley Arrow, Candace Summer Blackstone Larson, Margaret Mede Brum, Anthony Wayne Giarangelli, Yarmo Ancio Lenkenen, Jeremy Lee Otteway, Jennifer Ann Smith, Tony Edward Tollison. All applications are attached, and all applicants have been verified by staff and meet the eligibility requirements stipulated by city charter. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, move forward with the City Commission appointment process and provide each candidate an opportunity to speak for three minutes. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. So those of you who have asked to speak, this is the public comment section just prior to this, so I think Brian Kerrigan, were, are you Brian? You were the first one to ask for a time to speak.
Right now?
In the effort of time, I will be brief. I just want to reiterate the fact that I know that most of us in this community appreciate the hard work and commitment that you guys make to this, this council and commission. So, you didn't get here by accident. Everyone chose to be in this position. You elect a mayor out of, out of the Commissioners. There's a lot of people in this community that value this service. There's a lot of people that believe that they have a voice and a say within this community for going through the process, and there is a way that this can be done, to find some balance here within to fill the City Commission. We've had candidates that have run. Some of them petitioned and submitted applications. Some did not. Some did not run in the, in the prior process. I think there's a lot of value and merit to participating in that process, and I think there is a lot of merit to recognizing those people that have done all those things that would be willing to volunteer and, and to sit on the City Commission, rather than be, you know, handpicked or appointed. That is, that is your choice. The Charter is what it is, and maybe that is another consideration, that it should be reviewed in the process, in a timely way of, so we can, if there's an election or appointment, this is the second time that a commissioner has moved on to the House of Representatives. Maybe others have moved into other positions, but it resigned during a very recent election, where there are seats open to be filled here on the City Commission, where in the event that that takes place, maybe we can use that election to, to fill these, these seats as well, or the order in which people earn votes in that election. So, I do not envy you gentlemen for what you need to do. We appreciate what you do for, for the city, and I encourage you, once again, strongly to, in, in the most possible way regarding Mr. Giarangelli, and consider appointing him onto the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob Anderson, 810 West Magnetic, Marquette. A month ago, I spoke on behalf of Tony Giarangelli, and I again speak on behalf of him. For all the things I echo that have been said about Tony, being qualified, being that he worked hard in the campaign, but most importantly, I think it's important on our commission to include the voice of working families. That's my key thing I want to impart tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Rose?
Joseph Rose IV, 540 East Michigan. Again, I'm going to echo a little bit, you know. Everyone up here, I believe, has found their way to this seat through a democratic process. You know, there were thousands of voices in that process. We have some applicants out here that probably have some voices behind them. Few dozen, maybe, maybe more than that, I'm not sure. But I think, you know, we need to listen to those thousands of voices that have spoken on who we want to see fill this seat. You know, these other people, they come up here and it's kind of, what I see is a easy street to the commission seat. You get a few people that put a good word in for them, you know, and they're not vetted through the public process, they're not shaking the skeletons out of their closets, you know, who knows? Maybe some of these people have had some problems with finances. I don't want them boiling on my finances for the city. Maybe they're a bad neighbor, you know, maybe they don't clean their dog or whatever, but I mean, those skeletons come out during that process. You are all willing to put yourself out there, as were the other candidates in this election process that we just had back in November. You know, I would hope you would take that into consideration. And also, Terry Giarangelli, you know, I worked with him as a steelworker at the mines. He was also our political liaison. He brought forth a lot of good information and did a lot of good work for us, trying to put forth, you know, the working person's efforts in this community. I'd like to see him on that seat. I know he's going to work hard at it. He's also done a lot of volunteer work for us, in the different public events that we put on. I know he's a hard worker. I know his heart's in the right place, and I believe he's qualified. Hope you consider that. Thanks.
Connor Rock, 1701 Lincoln Ave, Apartment 41, Marquette. I would like to also suggest that Tony Giarangelli be the appointee to the empty seat. I knocked doors with Tony. He connected with every single resident. He cares. He's a strong worker. He's dedicated. He's passionate. He's a family man, and he's what we need to have representing the working class of Marquette, especially in a time like people have mentioned with increasing rent prices and lower wages. We need someone like Tony who will fight for those people. And, again, I would just, would just like to comment that if people wanted the seat, they, in my opinion, they should have run in the election. Tony was the fourth vote getter, and I believe that that is enough merit in itself to be appointed to the seat. And, again, I would also like to comment on women in politics. I definitely think we need more women in politics. I would definitely... need more women in politics, I would definitely agree with everything you said about the board.
Thank you.
I respect all of you, I have a lot of respect for you, but we do need more women in politics, and I would just like to say that I think we should be encouraging women to run, I think that if, if the people who applied for this job wanted it, they should have ran in the election. And I would just like to say that I think Tony Guerin Gelli would be a great representative of the people in Marquette, this is a working community, and we need someone who represents those people. Thank you.
Mike Williams? No, okay. Katie Barglan?
Katie Barglan, 204 West Michigan Street, Marquette. Thank you all for being here tonight, and I would just like to quickly say that I was here November 13th to support Tony Guerin Gelli, and I stand by that. I looked through all nine applications, and I believe that there are some qualified other candidates, or, and that Tony is the one that should be up here on the commission. I was also out knocking doors with him in the election, and not only did he really connect with the community members, he gave out his cellphone number to each person, each door that he talked to, and said, you know, if you have any questions, if I'm elected, not elected, call me, I'm willing to sit down with you and work with you, and that's the kind of person that I think will really listen in this community, and that's important to take note of, and also, I too believe that there should be more females up here, but that I would encourage more females to run in the future, and that's what I have. Thank you, and I encourage you to support Tony Guerin Gelli.
Thank you. Bob Campenzi, Bob?
Bob Campenzi, 306 North Sixth Street. Probably the only thing that I would add is, you know, going back four weeks ago, Commissioner Stonehouse mentioned that it was like, well, we're really probably electing, or appointing somebody for seven years, which I really don't think we are, granted, you know, the incumbent has a little bit of an advantage, but I think the person that fills that seat for the next year is going to really be looked at, you know, and like I said earlier, if that person just, you could listen for the whole year, but if you don't really participate, and, you know, have, have some, have some good things to, to add to what this commission discusses, and some good opinions, and don't be afraid to be the lone vote. Let me add that, because we know that there was one lone vote many times here, so, good luck to all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Verato Frank?
Frank Verato, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. November 13th, this board wisely solicited applications rather than hurriedly select the fourth highest vote getter under the tremendous pressure that prevailed. Mr. Frazier correctly stated that those who did not throw their hat in the ring before may wish to now, one reason being the regular ballots fill three-year terms while the ballot in question spans only one year for the term in question. Commenters feared this board may be looking for a good old boy, my concern exactly. Based on my 20 years here, this concern is extremely valid, although with enough public pressure, this unhealthy eventuality may be averted. We get good old boys because people vote for, for recognizable names, except when a known person is obviously not a viable candidate. I'm only familiar with two applicants, although I've reviewed the applications, just four of the nine, to my knowledge, have applied for commission seats before, all men. We must consider how many votes these people received against how recognizable their names are. If applicants with recognizable names have bombed out in the past, we know they're not wanted, whereas applicants who don't have recognizable names deserve a closer look. One example was Matt, who'd planned to submit an app but refrained because of how this board mishandles people who present fresh ideas in the public interest. It's a miracle that anyone would run considering the treatment that he and Ms. Campenzi, for that matter, received. The nine candidates boast a plethora of experience they could bring to this board, either the woman or the man with a disability ought to be favored. The latter, however, is a male and seems too focused on disability concerns despite his experience on other boards. In a similar vein, one woman seems too focused on women's issues and children, and it's not yet known if school board and commission meetings might conflict. A second woman looks to have a background with exploitive industries, which could work either way, but I'd question whether she'd roll with the big money interests. That leaves Candace Larson, whom I've never met. Although most candidates boast people and business skills, she emphasized listening, which is what this board so, so sorely needs. She wrote, quote, "Honestly, I think I have a talent of listening. Being on the commission requires you to hear comments before you truly formulate an opinion. It requires you to see both sides of a discussion and understanding the implications of all parties involved," end quote. She's also lived in large and small places. We've heard board members who claim to listen but end up being some of the worst listeners this planet has ever known, so be careful. Please refrain from appointing anyone who we know the public doesn't want just to get votes. Ms. Campenzi should be replaced with another woman who has a mind of her own because both women and open-mindedness are grossly underrepresented on this board with unhealthy results that mar our public record. Replace an open-minded woman with an open-minded woman, not someone to play along with the good old boys. On November 13th, Mr. Campana claimed it's not a good old boys' club. Oh, yes, it is, regardless of who's chosen tonight.
Mike Tebow?
590 West M-35, Quinn, Michigan. Again, I think there was a process that took place, I too sympathize with the comments about more female representation, although I think Sarah does a good job of fighting for the females, as well as Sarah did, but, you know, the process isn't easy to go through, as you all know, and we had a candidate that went out and garnered the fourth number, fourth position in the number of votes received, I know how hard he worked towards that, I know him well as far as his commitment when he takes it on, he'll be a good addition to this commission, and he'll work well with all of you, I'm sure. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for expressing your opinions. It's my, it's the intention of this commission tonight to select a person to fill this unexpired term. This term will end November 12th of 2018, and if this individual wished to continue after this date, they will have to file for nominating in April of 2018 and run for election then in November. To reiterate, application deadlines closed on Thursday, November 30th at 5:00 PM. The commissioners received electronic as well as a hard copy of the material that individuals provided, along with a form requesting information. Those applications have also been available to the public online, as many of you have referenced, and in the clerk's office, and each of the applicants has also received a letter from the city clerk acknowledging receipt of their application. In that letter, they were notified that they would be given three minutes on the agenda this evening to address the commission. They were also advised in the letter that, that we asked them to focus on the challenges or opportunities confronting the community and not necessarily repeat what's already on their application. I want to thank the nine people, applicants, for taking the time to apply and put themselves forward for consideration to fill this unexpired term. Exciting things are occurring in this community and the city, and the commission will have another very busy year. I assume the applicants are aware of the time commitment required for this undertaking, and I think you all understand that tonight, one person is going to be selected and pleased, and eight will not, and be disappointed. I also want to thank those individuals who took the time and effort to send us emails, other communications, indicating support for the people who have run. So I want to thank you for showing your interest in, in our community. Now, what I intend to do, as the commissioners, what I'm going to do is propose, because we have to adopt the procedure, I'm going to propose a process for this evening's meeting to help us arrive at a decision. I printed a copy of what I'm going to say, let me share it with you so that you have it in front of you, and then I will seek a motion or some clarification on it. What we're going to do is each applicant will be given three minutes to speak. The applicant is asked to address the two or three challenges or opportunities the city's facing in the coming year or two. The order of speaking will be by a blind draw of numbers for speaking order, the drawing will be done, conducted by the city clerk. When the applicant competes, when the applicants complete their comments, the commissioners will vote, and voting will occur in the following manner. Each candidate's name will be listed on a ballot in alphabetical order. The ballot is prepared by the clerk, the first person to receive a majority of votes, which is four or more, will be deemed appointed by the, for the unexpired term. Each commissioner will sign the back of the ballot, we are not permitted to do secret ballots, so it is a public ballot. The city clerk will distribute, collect, and tally the ballot. The ballots will be held by the city clerk and can be reviewed in her office. At the end of each round of balloting, the clerk will announce the names of the individuals receiving one or more votes and the number of votes. If no one receives a majority of votes on the first ballot, a second ballot will be distributed with the names of the individuals not receiving any votes on the first ballot crossed out. If no one receives a majority of votes on the second ballot, the clerk will distribute a third ballot, crossing out the name of the individual not receiving any votes in the second ballot. This process will continue until an individual receives four votes. This is the process we follow for the, similar process we follow for the election of the mayor and the mayor pro tem at our organizational meeting in November. Upon the announcement of the individual receiving four or more votes, the individual will take the oath of office administered by the city clerk and will be seated for the balance of tonight's meeting. So commissioners, that is what I'm proposing to you and as a method for us to arrive at a decision. Do you have a motion? Commissioner Campana?
I move that we adopt the process proposed by our mayor to fill the vacancy on the commission.
Is there support? Commissioner Frazier?
Support.
Support, okay. Comments?
Well, I feel that this method is the fairest, most logical way that we have to pick the next commissioner. We are fulfilling the intent of our city commission, or city charter, and are following the same method of selection that's been done by previous commissions.
Commissioner Frazier?
It's a great, great way to fill the vacancy, and also just to give everybody, good luck to everybody that's running, and also, if you don't get elected, feel free to look at the list to see what other, advocate, whatever boards need members. If you're not, if you're not elected to the commission, don't be afraid to get on another board, a lot of our boards have vacancies and need people that are good and willing to help, so don't be afraid to look at other boards.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I don't have a particular problem with this voting mechanism, I think it's, sounds great, I'm glad you figured something out to make this an easier process, I just wanted to confirm with Ron that everything...
Pardon me?
I just wanted to ask Ron, this seems on the up and up...
Yes, I should have said that, I did consult Eric.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure, that, as far as on the up and up.
The charter doesn't offer much, other than a majority vote of the commission, and I think this is a good process to, to get there.
Okay.
So I'm fine with it. Commissioner Plord?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think we're very, very fortunate, we've got nine candidates, and I can assure you, we've spent a lot of time looking at all the candidates, their backgrounds, everything, every bit of information that we have, and I want to thank also all the people that sent emails and contacted us in a lot of other ways, because people did get an opportunity to vote on this, they took advantage of it and they did it, and we are very, very fortunate to have nine really, really good candidates. I'm so glad you guys, all of you, put in for, for the job, because we're going to fail and not fail. As the mayor said, there will be eight people disappointed, but whoever we appoint, we're going to get a good candidate, there's, there's no doubt about that, so I really appreciate everybody else getting involved. Thank you.
Okay. No further comment, then we have to draw, so the clerk will draw and announce what order. It was suggested at one point we do alphabet, alphabetical, and I said, no, that's... First, we have to vote on the motion, Your Honor. Vote on the motion, then you can do the drawing. Okay. Then, all those in favor of the motion, Kate, by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, passes six zero, okay. Then clerk will draw the names and announce what order they speak.
Okay. And we have our chief of police recording with me also. David Arrow, is he present tonight?
No, David is not here.
So, the first speaker is Candace Summer Blackstone Larson.
We're going to draw all the numbers, so you don't have to sit there, having to spring up, okay?
So you know. Our second speaker is Margaret Brum. Third speaker is Yarmo Lankinen. Fourth speaker is Aaron Andrus. Fifth speaker is Jeremy Otteway. Sixth speaker is Jennifer Ann Smith. Seven, Anthony Wayne Guerin Gelli. And our final speaker is Tony Tollison.
So Candace Summer Blackstone.
Larson, I know, I have the longest last name, to me, I'm sorry. Okay, Candace Blackstone Larson for 21 Rock Street, Marquette. First off, thank you commissioners for allowing all of us to speak tonight, even after you guys read all of our applications. Also, I'd like to say it's pretty awesome that so many people came out and that they're really passionate about who they believe in in this process, so thank you guys also. You guys are killing me with the three-minute time limit, though, because I could really talk for probably about a half an hour, so, to get to it quickly, as a mother of two young girls, I want to see Marquette thrive. I want to see it become the best that it can possibly be for not just my girls, but my children, and for future generations as well. With that, there are a few areas of concern that I see us facing in the next few years that you asked us to talk about, one being we need to create more service-oriented jobs that also provide a livable family wage. Two, we need to continue to increase our tourism, I know we do a great job, but it still needs to continue. And three, we need to get more young people involved. So clearly, honestly, that's one of the biggest reasons that I'm here. Marquette has an incredible resource of young professionals that have either grown up here and stayed, or they moved away and they came back, they're bringing families with them, they wanted a better life, so they came back to Marquette, they're starting businesses, they're buying businesses, they're working for businesses, and we need to find a solution to get them more involved. All of us in leadership on committees and boards need to start taking an active role in mentoring the young professionals in this community, because they are going to be the future leaders that are going to be sitting up here and on advisory boards. The other two points are somewhat similar, right? Continue to increase our tourism and create more service-oriented rather than resource-based jobs. I grew up in a small town in Oregon that was probably a third the size of Marquette, and it was a resource-based economy for logging, and when logging started to decrease, that town almost died. Unlike another town, Bend, Oregon, who saw the writing on the wall and they increased their tourism spend decades ago, and now they are the, one of the fastest-growing cities not only in Oregon, but in the entire United States as well. We have to keep pushing for increased tourism in this community, it's not only going to help create those tourism jobs in hotels and restaurants, but it's going to bring people here, it's going to bring their businesses here, it's going to bring people who want to retire, and then they're going to put their, their money back into this community. I've been really fortunate to work outside of Marquette, in international and all over the US, but I've also been really fortunate to work in two great businesses here, at State Farm, which is a service-oriented business, and Easy Ice, which is continuing to grow because they're acquiring other businesses. So, we've got to keep with that, more service-oriented tourism and young people. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Margaret Brum. I was born and raised in Marquette, Michigan, and if you knew me back then, you'd know me as Mickey Brum. And for those of you who remember that far back, I'll answer the number one question on your mind. My father was Babo Brum, the Nagani High School teacher and tennis coach. My uncle was Oki Brum. And my grandfather was Ike Brum. He used to be mayor of this community. So even though I've not spent every hour of my life in Marquette, Michigan, I've never left Marquette, Michigan. I'm, I'm gonna make an odd statement right now, but I think it needs to be made. I bought every car that I've ever owned from Marquette, Michigan. Even if I've been two or three states away, I've come back to Marquette to buy a car. I've, I say that because economics of Marquette is the only thing that keeps Marquette going, and we've had a, a quantum leap in, in change in what we were to what we are now. I put myself through Michigan Tech, working in the Empire Mine. My job before that was working at the Finlandia. That, that job paid two twenty-five an hour dishwashing, and the mining job was five fifteen an hour. And if you think I don't ever forget those numbers, I don't ever forget those numbers. That, the difference in wages made it possible for me to put myself through college. We don't have that anymore. So we have that as a number one concern. The number two concerns are we have a huge homeless population in Marquette, and we're overwhelmed, our volunteer organizations with that. We need to set up a homeless task force to consolidate all of the good work being done by the volunteer agencies. We need to identify the homeless. We need to, uh, work with the Invented NMU people and come up with an invention contest to design a small viable home that can be built for a limited amount of resources and can be put where you can hook it up to city utilities. So one person, one home, that can have a, a life away from shelters and other temporary facilities that aren't connected for that. And you've got a huge growth in Invented NMU, you've got a cluster of people just waiting for the project to be started. You need a homeless task force, and you need to set that up and solve, I want to say two, three, four, five burdens, because once it works in Marquette, you can take it out for the rest of the world. My second, number one issue is Picnic Rocks parking lot got destroyed. Lake Shore Boulevard got destroyed. I was out of town on business when that happened, and my heart is broken. I grew up on East Magnetic Street. I am one of the few people who lived to say that I learned how to swim in Lake Superior when it was forty degrees out. We have got to put money in that. I'm glad for the consent decree. I'm glad you've got enough money to do that, but you've got to build up that area. It can never be allowed to be forgotten, because that's the heart and soul of getting to the island, which is what makes Marquette fabulous. I, I hope you pick me, and if you do, I'll do a good job. Thank you.
Good evening, Jarmalankinen, Eight Market Drive, here in the city of Marquette. You all know who I am. You all know that I have run for the city commission several times unsuccessfully. Lived in the community for forty-plus years, had a business here for forty-plus years as well. And really, what I may or may not say, it doesn't matter, because when we're on this side of the bench, it's a whole different picture than we're sitting on the other side of the bench. And so I'll let you guys make the decision on what you want to do. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here today to speak on behalf of one in five individuals that don't have a vo, really have a voice in this community. I think that there needs to, I bring some diversity to this, I would bring some diversity to this board that isn't currently here. I would bring a different perspective that most people don't get to see, because the disabled people can't get out in this community. That is something I would like to change and, um, see happen for the development of the city of Marquette. We've done, done a lot of reconstruction for different roads and different stuff to improve the city and improve quality of life for individuals, but yet the disabled individual seems to have been forgot, forgotten because of the lack of accessibility in this community. Particularly with the transportation system, it's difficult to maneuver around and get from place to place with, um, with the, uh, my second point would be to work with the DDA to possibly encourage more of a walkable area downtown, maybe perhaps make universal design, more universal design areas for the disabled population. Yes, I'm, I speak a lot for the disabled, but I am a good listener, and I would listen to everybody involved, not just the disabled person, but I speak for those individuals that cannot speak for themselves, and because, um, individuals that aren't disabled have a better time of speaking for themselves, that's why I, um, promote the disability movement. And I appreciate my time on the planning commission and my time with the Board of Zoning Appeals. I believe that I have a lot of experience within, um, the city that would make me an excellent candidate. I'm, like I said, I'm a good listener, and if you, I were to be selected, you would see a side of me where I am opinionated, yes, but I am willing to listen. You're gonna get a straight answer, you're going to get who I am as a person, and I would really appreciate your vote. Thank you.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and the rest of the city commission for considering me to fill the seat vacated by Representative Cam Benzi. If appointed, I promise to be a champion of Marquette and will work as hard as possible to ensure representing the community with the respect and professionalism it deserves. Putting this down to three challenges is very difficult, as everyone understands. I, I think first we need to look at our budget revenue issue in the city of Marquette. Marquette's not receiving as much money from the state as it once did. We obviously are gonna be doing things to get revenue in the city, and there are gonna be important decisions that need to be made. We're gonna be possibly developing the brownfield sites as well as the power plant sites if they are vacated. When we look at this, this must be done with a responsible developer who understands the liabilities associated with each project, and also can understand the, the beautification and the issues in Marquette with people loving the community and loving what Marquette has to offer and keeping it as, as Marquette. Second, infrastructure and roads. We have to continue developing Marquette in a way that makes sense for Marquette. We have to do this while understanding the concerns of the public about costs and preservation and what makes our community unique. Lake Shore Boulevard, obviously, is gonna need to be relocated. We've talked about this, and the city has looked at this in detail already. We know that this is gonna be about a ten million dollar project. We're gonna need to look at finding outside source funds for this, obviously grants, things like that, that are coming from the state resources, because it's gonna be, you know, a ten million dollar budget associated with this that the city just probably can't afford to flip, not easily, obviously. Third, we have to retain decision-making and control as a city. This is challenging, yet very important, because it allows our local government to make decisions about our community. I can't sit here and say that I know how I'm going to respond to that, because it's a very difficult process to, to retain that control. What I will say is I will be a champion for this city. I'll do everything I can to make sure that those decisions are made here, and we're making the right decisions first, so the state doesn't have to step in. I can tell you, I'll be, you know, a good team player when it comes to that, and work with you guys to make sure that we're looking at every piece we can to make sure that the state doesn't have to step in and we can retain control to make decisions. With that, we have to review our ordinances as a city. It's clear to me, just watching the meetings and seeing what's been going on, that's a big-time issue in the city. People have concerns about what ordinances we have and how often we review them. We have to talk about our sign ordinances, we have to talk about things that affect people, you know, from building and, and doing things like that to their homes and everything else. But since my time is coming up, I just wanted to say thank you again, and please vote for me. I'll, I'll do as good as I possibly can and, and represent Marquette the way it needs to be represented. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jenna Smith, and I live at seventeen twenty-one Killal Avenue in Marquette with my husband and our daughter. I'm a graduate of Marquette Senior High School and the University of Michigan. I have experience working in finance, workforce development, and human resources, and I'm also currently the vice chair of the Marquette Housing Commission. I have no set agenda for joining the Marquette City Commission, only the desire to help make decisions with the perspective of someone who is a woman, a young person, a mother of a toddler, and a local who moved back home. The first challenge I would like to address from the current strategic plan for the city of Marquette is support economic development and job creation to retain and attract young people in our community. My experience working for Michigan Works in Marquette, Escanaba, and Houghton, and now as a human resources manager for Marquette Area Public Schools, has provided me with solid insights about the local and regional job market. I'm very familiar with the challenges our region faces when it comes to talent attraction and retention, and I believe this is an area that is crucial for the future of Marquette. As a commissioner, I would respond to this challenge by connecting with business owners, community members, and educational entities to develop strategies in order to meet the needs of local employers. I would also provide insights about what my peers would like to see when it comes to affordable housing, recreation planning, capital improvements, and a strong downtown. These topics are very important for talent retention. The second challenge I would like to address from the strategic plan is retention and recruitment for Marquette City Boards and Commissions. I would address this challenge by researching the following. How are boards structured for other municipalities of similar size, population, and budget? Is each board truly necessary, or could any be combined? Do the boards each have the right number of seats, or are some too large? Are the terms too long? Is this discouraging volunteers? I would then recruit by treating these positions like any other job that needs to be filled. Promote the board seats with an eye-catching flyer, highlight the fact that serving on a board is a great resume booster, an opportunity to learn, and a chance to grow your professional network. Advertise vacancies on social media and job sites such as Facebook, Instagram, Indeed, NMU Career Services, et cetera, and also send vacancies to related groups that may know of interested candidates. In conclusion, I believe we need more women and young people to serve on the Marquette City Commission to more accurately represent the city of Marquette residents. I decided that I couldn't ask someone to step up if I wasn't doing it myself, so here I am. Whoever you decide to vote for, I ask that you make your choice, thinking about the future of our community. It is my hope that Marquette will continue to be the jewel of the Midwest for many years to come, so that my daughter will always be proud to call Marquette home. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tony Garangelli. I, um, I originally ran and applied because I, I wanted to work with you guys, but more importantly, I wanted to represent the, the city of Marquette. I have a background, I work, I represent working families. I'm also a student, I'm a father, and I'm a husband, and I, I'm thirty-five years old, and I just didn't think we had as much working represent, working families being represented on this board. I, uh, when it comes, I won't say much about my background more than that, but other than some of the major issues, one of the biggest concerns for me, I think, is our budget, and we keep losing money through revenue sharing. What's gonna happen there? We have to build relationships to get that revenue sharing back from the state, and we also have to look at, another concern would be job creation. With our budget, our budgets, we're losing the revenue sharing, plus we also have closure coming up with the We Energies, and then potentially with the South Marquette Power Plants. We need, uh, so we're gonna lose our biggest taxpayer, plus we also might lose the, I believe the South Marquette would be payment in lieu of taxes, but that's gonna be a big hit to the budget. We need to figure out what we're gonna do to not only get these people jobs that are gonna lose, lose them jobs, but how we're gonna have less money, and we've gotta make the city viable and what's fair for the taxpayers. I, uh, I have good relationships with state reps, state senators. I will work well with yous. I think that's our biggest thing, is if we can work together with other municipalities and state county levels, we will be able to, uh, that's what we're gonna have to do if we want to have the right budget and if we want to move on and keep Marquette a beautiful place to live. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Tony Tolleson.
Commissioners and Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor. First of all, I want to address the issue with disabilities and Marktran. I've been on the Marktran Board for twelve years. It's been an issue that we've been trying to address. There is a door-to-door service that tries to personalize some of that service. Much like you, Marktran Board also has limited budgets and can't go well into the evenings, although we've tried to address that issue, and so I'm aware of that. Also with Marktran, you've just submitted my name to go before the Marquette County, to be submitted on Marktran. There is a president for that. I did serve prior as a commissioner and on the Marktran Board, so that wouldn't create a conflict as well. I can see the fact that not only the power plant, but the hospital and the, in the, in the moving of the hospital, we're gonna have really great opportunities and challenges for redevelopment, and hopefully, we're gonna be able to use some of that to provide the kind of housing that's gonna be more affordable housing for people rather than just high-end housing. That's been one of the constant complaints. With the necessary development of Founder's Landing and along there, those were higher-end homes, but that's also higher-end property. And now we're gonna have some other areas that will allow us, hopefully, to be able to do some things to help more affordable housing and, and, and high, possibly higher-density housing. It's also interesting, the comments about Lake Shore Drive. My first time going through the budget process, I got taken to task by the Mining Journal because late in that process, I wanted to try and create a sinking fund to start putting money aside for Lake Shore. And the fact that we are having erosion there, and because of the high cost, it's been brought up, and it's gonna be, is the city have some funds available to be able to leverage those for grants, because sometimes you're gonna need matching funds or do other things as well. So it's amazing how an issue that I wanted to bring up in my first go-around as a budget and my first time as a commissioner, is still an issue that kind of lingers today. And I was very much one in supportive of trying to preserve Presque Isle and making sure that we don't have erosion around that area as well. And, and so those are the kinds of things I would be willing to still work with on this commission. I was always open, accessible. People knew where I stood, and I was always willing to listen to people and hear their comments as well, but I, I didn't get a lot of calls, because people understood, I explained myself well, and I, but I would take input from folks and, and listen to what they had, but I also made it clear then, with that dialogue, where the positions were at. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your, your comments. Commissioners, at this point, we're supposed to vote. So.
Please remember to sign the back of your ballots. Please remember to sign the back of your ballots. On the first vote, Mr. Guerin Gelli received three votes. Jeremy Otway one and Jennifer Ann Smith two, so we will vote again.
Could we have that again, please?
Yes. Jeremy Otway, three votes. Excuse me. Guerin Gelli, three votes. Jeremy Otway one and Jennifer Ann Smith two. So according to this process, those are the three remaining candidates. On the second ballot, Jennifer Ann Smith received four votes and Jeremy Otway two. Congratulations, Jennifer.
Jennifer, would you please join us over here? You have to take the oath of office.
I, Jennifer Ann Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Marquette City Commission.
Of the Office of Marquette City Commission.
Of the City of Marquette.
Of the City of Marquette.
According to the best.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome.
Thank you.
If you don't take a signed copy, please.
Congratulations. Then join us at the dais and you can make some comments.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all, and thank you for participating and coming here. And at this point on the agenda, we're open for the second round of public comment. So anyone wishing to speak at this point can do so. Please come up, give us your name, your address, and we'll proceed from there. Anyone wanting to speak on the agenda.
Frank Chafardo, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Tonight's coastal grant item on the consent agenda ought to have been handled separately. Also, there was only one business item on tonight's agenda, though be it important. How about Lighthouse Park, though, and Slope's ordinances that have been on the backburner for fifteen years? November twenty-seventh, Mr. Plord claimed, quote, "Your grasp of even the obvious is very problematic." This has become very clear to me. For example, tonight you state that we bypassed an issue regarding solid waste management with glass. If you go back to watch the film, you'll see there was a lengthy discussion about that, and we also had a vote. So again, your grasp of the obvious is lacking, end quote. I vividly recall that discussion, including the dissension between this board and the waste handler. We heard that glass may no longer be accepted at some point, meaning we'd need to place glass items in the green bags. I added on November thirteenth that glass items may break against each other. This can pose a hazard should a sharp edge slice open someone's leg. My every word about glass pertained to that hazard, which to my recollection wasn't mentioned during the discourse. If it was, discussion is warranted when a safety concern is presented. Mr. Plord also thanked me for, quote, "Stating publicly that basically what I'm doing is attacking during public comment. We all know that, everyone that watches knows that, I'm just glad to know that you know that," end quote. He's been told that my personal attacks are delivered by reporting what happened. That's why they sound so nasty. Mr. Plord asked attacks for the sake of retaliating based on his habit of reacting, not even knowing what he just heard. The ironies are, he instigates exactly what he claims his board cannot use, and he's the main cause of this time spent on clarification. He's asked to learn how to review the record so he can digest what's said before blurting wildly. If he'd either listened or reviewed the record, more of this limited speaking time would be spent on items we can all use instead of on this constant clarification. He's also referred, he also referred to, quote, "kindergarten mimifications" that I'd mentioned on November thirteenth and twenty-seventh. I didn't use the word kindergarten either night, and what's a mimification? Two librarians looked this up, one of whom checked Mr. Plord's enunciation on YouTube, and found no such word, not even in the Oxford or Underbridge dictionaries. There's minification and mummification, but neither fits. He appeared to use a big word to impress us, and though he possesses fine speaking skills, he's a pitiful listener. The same is true of Mr. Campana, who advised I file an application. He makes this crazy recommendation after it's been explained to him numerous times that we've never seen a member with a mind of her or his own make a difference. So why bother? Please, Mr. Baldini, take action behind the scenes so we may stick to the issues for everyone's sake, especially for the members of the board.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this point?
It's Joe Rose, fourth, five forty East Michigan. I wanna congratulate Jenna. I know Jenna, and I'm sure she's gonna do a great job for this board, our commission. And I can't help but feel that democracy kinda went by the wayside a little bit here. You know, there were thousands of people that voted in the last election. There was a good representation of what those voters wanted. I don't believe we see that happening tonight. And, you know, I hope the rest of us out here, that the rest of our applicants, I hope they throw their name in the ring in April. And as far as the thousands of voters that voted, I hope they remember this night, because I think we need to change. Not saying that you guys are doing a bad job, I think you guys are doing a great job. It's tough to come out here and do what you do, but I just don't believe you listen to the majority, because in a vote, margin only has to be one, not a thousand, not a hundred, not even twelve, just one. Thank you.
Good evening, you're in Malachi Nate, Marquette Drive. I wanna congratulate you guys on choosing the candidate, as well as I kinda knew that she was going to prevail, and so consequently, I didn't go into any deep discussion. You have a good candidate amongst you. She's on the Housing Commission with me. I don't know how that will entail, whether she will stay on or will depart. That will come later. But anyways, I, congratulations on your choice, and she will do a good job, and thank you for the opportunity, and take care.
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic Street. I'm here today to talk about the Lake Shore Boulevard situation with picnic rocks. I walk my dog there every day, and when I say every day, if you check out my videos on the websites, you'll see I walk every day. And I don't know why, but I'm getting over a thousand views and it's just showing the lake. And I'm here to let the members of the commission who maybe don't go there every day know that this consent thing to get a grant from the state is wonderful, but I looked at the timing and you're not even gonna start till next fall. And right now, that place is a minefield waiting for somebody to A, trip and fall, which has almost happened to me, B, trip and fall into the water and hit their head on a vertical stand of rusty metal that has been exposed by that lakeshore. I know you all went down there. I know you all had a chance to look at it. It's not getting any better. And in fact, I saw the four pictures you had in your grant. I had over seven thousand views of the video I took the day of the picnic rocks when I got back into town, and even more erosion is happening because there's nothing there to stop it. I mean, there's one wave and another rock goes down. And I would also encourage you to look into the traffic situation. There's only one parking lot there now. It's gravel, it's got a huge bump, somebody's gonna bottom out on that, and that's going to be another issue of preventable city liability. You're gonna need to grade that, you're gonna need to police it, sir. I apologize, I'm looking right at you like you're not doing it, but you're gonna need to police it because it's the only access point you're gonna have. Plus, and speaking on behalf of someone who could not love that part of the world more, the grant money's two hundred thousand dollars, the estimate in the paper was half a million. This is a long-term project, it's never gonna go away, it's gonna have to be addressed because the beach that I grew up on is not there anymore. And in fact, somebody's bench is gonna topple into the water. I've taken pictures of it, and I feel terrible for them because those benches mean a lot. My nephew's bench is out on Presque Isle, and it couldn't connect people more to this. So what I'm gonna recommend you do is you gotta put money, time, and effort into that graded parking lot now. Your signage has got to improve because with all due respect to the people in this area, we just lost two people from the Upper Peninsula who didn't, who didn't respect the water. And you're gonna get visitors come in and say, "Oh, look, it's really exciting here." And the next thing you know, their child is gonna fall into the lake and the liability is gonna stop the city from being able to invest in all of these programs you need. And I'm not an alarmist, I just look at it every day. And one last word, you gotta keep the bathrooms open there because there isn't a city employee driving in a truck right now who has a place to go to the bathroom during the day except for those picnic rocks bathrooms, and I know that because I've seen him run in and out. So thank you for your time and consideration, please put the time and effort into saving the picnic rocks area.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Anyone else?
Jeremy Otway, four forty-three Craig Street. I just wanted to say first off, congratulations. I think the city commission had a very difficult choice, and I think they made the right one. I think starting this entire process, looking at it from the standpoint of taking applications, making sure you got a qualified candidate, who I'm assuming you guys chose somebody that is a great candidate, she seems to be, and I applaud you for making that choice because, as I stated last or two weeks ago at the meeting, this wasn't about an election anymore. The city of Marquette made that election choice, and we all understand that. It was up to the commission to make the best appointment they could, and I think you guys may have done that, and I applaud you for it. So I say best of luck to you. I will definitely be applying for some sort of committee, so you guys won't be getting rid of me that easy, but I definitely look forward to the next year, and good luck. Thank you.
Candace Blackstone Larson, four two one Rock Street, Marquette. First of all, congratulations, Jenna. I'm so excited for you. I echo everything that Jeremy actually said. I think that you guys had really a tough decision, but I think it was the right decision. I think the way you guys went about it was the correct way. And I encourage you to take some of the things that she presented in her proposal about getting more young people involved. So we sit, we sit there on the Forty Below Board and consistently talk about how we can get young professionals involved and get them to stay here, and it's gonna take you guys getting involved in that process, not just making a post or sending an email to the board and asking us to send it out to our people. It's going to take all of you guys now making that effort to get everyone involved. So same thing with Jeremy, now I get to pick which other committee I get, I wanna be on, and if that doesn't happen, I'll see you at the next election. So, thanks.
Tony Guerin Gelli, seven eleven Grove Street. I just wanted to say I appreciate the consideration that you guys give me, and congratulations to you, and I wish you the best of luck, and I know it's a tough decision that you guys made, and there was a lot of great candidates and applicants, so I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Public comment? Anyone else? Okay, not hearing any. Let's move on to the rest of our agenda. Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Reynolds and we'll...
Congratulations, Mr. Jenna. I wanna thank everyone that did apply, and I will be completely honest as to how I voted. First round, I voted for Tony, next round, I voted for Jeremy, next round was gonna be Jenna. I had four people in my pile that I thought were very qualified, and those were the people that I was gonna continue to move forward. I think it's important that we choose someone that represents that seat, and I do believe that Jenna will represent that seat and Sarah's seat well. So congratulations again, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, thank everybody that took part, and for the record, I think you should know that a lot of people contacted us, a lot of people know us, and Jenna, you're gonna find out how many people know you or think they know you coming up, but congratulations. But by far, by far, the people that contacted me said this was the best way to go. I know and I respect the people who felt that the person who came in fourth in the last election deserved a lot of attention and rightly so. I've met Tony Guerin Gelli, talked to him, and I think he deserved attention simply because he was Tony Guerin Gelli and had a lot to offer. Jeremy Otway had a lot to offer as well. All the candidates, Aaron, you've done so much with the city, you've had a lot to offer as well, and we're so glad that you're doing what you do with the city, and I hope you continue, and I'm so happy to hear people say, well, wanna get involved in other committees and maybe look forward to next election. It's part of the process, and then give, you know, give people a chance to vote for you. But people did get involved, a lot of people got involved. We had just an amazing amount of emails, again, people stopping us and wherever, I've never, by far, this was by far the hardest vote that I've ever had to make as a city commissioner, and by far the most attention people have given it, that have just stopped by and talked to me, saw me in this restaurant or that store and stopped by and said, "Hey, Mike, you know, here's my opinion about this." And I did listen to every opinion, and it was part of what shaped my vote. So I think overall, we did get a great candidate, but thank all the candidates for trying, because you did find out one other thing. As many people have said, Mr. Cam Benzies mentioned it, you put yourself out there, and that's what happens. So... So, well done. Thank you.
Let me preface by saying, and I think most of you realize, I was a city commissioner for six years prior to, again, coming to the commission. And by far, this was the hardest vote of every cast. This was the most difficult decision I ever had to make as a city commissioner for six years. And part of that was strongly the argument of Mr. Guerengelli got the votes and finished fourth, and that was a powerful argument. But the argument that the election was closed and finished was a powerful argument, too. No matter what we did, we were going to be wrong. We could not make a decision that was the right decision because there were eight other wrong decisions out there or reversed. So it's one of those situations where you cannot please everybody that you'd like to please. You can't do it. Lot of sleepless nights, guys, let me tell you. It's a lot of sleepless nights. It's time when you think you can shut the brain off, and you can't because you keep rolling around all the options and all the decisions and all the pros and all the cons of everybody. And of course, the overwhelming thing kind of hanging us over there was number four in the election, which was something to be very much considered. So I encourage certainly the folks that ran, and I want to thank everybody that put an application in. I want to thank them for coming forward and volunteering and ultimately stepping forward into a position like Jenna did where she's going to find out a lot of sleepless nights, too, and not just because you have young children, but also because of the weight of the issues that you have and knowing that they will affect people. Every one of them, every decision, there's darn few decisions we make here that don't affect people in some regards, whether it's an ADA issue downtown, whether it's what we do with picnic rocks, how we do this, how we do that, the money that goes in this fund goes out of that fund. All of that affects people and makes it all very difficult. I do feel the way we did it was about as transparent as you possibly can make it and still keep some semblance of order to the process. I'll be happy to tell you that I voted for Mr. Guerengelli the first time around and voted for Jenna the second time around because I didn't see it breaking the way I thought it may have broke. That was a decision made. And of course, the clerk does have the ballots, and anybody that wants to examine them, certainly it is all public knowledge. But thank you all for your patience. Thank you for your good order. Thank you for allowing this process to work, and thank you for the commission, too, for us doing it the way the charter says we have to do it and following the letter of that law, whether we necessarily liked it or didn't like it or think it should be changed. It's the way that had to be done. And I wish everybody a very happy holiday coming up, and I hope we'll all be here too next meeting so we have another full audience. Thank you. Thank you.
Eric Campana?
First, I'd like to thank everybody that showed up tonight. We appreciate your participation. We need to know what you have to say and think, and so again, we're glad you came. Second, congratulations to Jenna. You're very deserving, and I think you'll be a very good commissioner, and we look forward to working with you. We had nine good candidates. I mean, I would have been happy with any one of them. This is a very difficult decision, as Commissioner Stonehouse has said. I've been thinking about, we've all been thinking about, I'm sure, since the November election. So this was not an easy decision. Kind of almost wish we didn't have to make it, but it had to be done. Hopefully, we did the best we could. I think the city's going to be well-served. You know, it would have been well-served by anybody, no matter who would have won. I think they're good candidates. They meant well, which leads me to believe or to hope that come next, this election next year, that they will file by April for the August primary, and hopefully we'll get a lot of applicants. We have good people out there, and we'd like to see them step up. Thank you.
Commissioner Precher? Thank you again to everybody that ran, and good luck to everybody out there, and congratulations, Ms. Smith. I think it's a good, we had a good way to do things. I think now it's in writing, so hopefully we can put this in the charter, maybe. I know I have learned as the commissioner, the charter is the bible basically for the city, and our attorney advised by that, and that's just the way we have to run. As far as lakeshore erosion, I've been around the lake my whole life. I've been a boarder my whole life, and I know erosion's very big along the lake. I've looked at that pile of rock along the lakeshore for years that can, boy, we had to do something, but we just don't have the money. I wish we could find a way to get more money, but we just can't. I mean, there's a way we can, I've talked to the mayor a couple times, and he said, you know, we could go after funding from this person, this person, get a hold of our state reps, see if you can find somebody to get a hold of funding. That's a great idea. As far as, you know, picnic rocks, it got beat up. I worked around Prescott. Prescott got beat up pretty bad, too, and, you know, it's what it is. Unfortunately, the lake does its things, and signage is another thing. You know, her park is closed. I vibe by that. Our park is closed for a reason. You know, the Prescott was closed that day, and people still went out there. You know, unfortunately, it's just the way people are. They want to, they look at the lake, "Oh, that's cruel." Yeah, unfortunately, it's cool, but keep yourself back, you know? As a boarder, I've learned that, you know, the lake can go from flat to high waves in a minute, you know? It's just the way it is. So again, just go forward with, you know, a draw, like for a draw of the city, and we're going to work hard to restore our lakeshore the best we can, and we're going to get every kind of funding we can get to move forward and look for, you know, what happened late in the year, the state decided, well, let's just hold off for a little while until we get more funding and see if we can redesign anything. We're working on it. We're going to work very hard and try to redesign everything. And, you know, again, thank you for everybody that's running, and don't forget to run for another committee. That's why I ran for, a friend of mine got me in a Prescott board years ago, and it was a great, just a great step up, to step up to this board. You know, it's a great, great community, a great thing to run, and just a great scenario. So thank you again, everybody.
Commissioner Smith?
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, for selecting me for the position, and thank you to the other candidates who applied. It's great to see that there are so many qualified candidates for this position. I'd just like to say that I'm looking forward to the year ahead, and I'm sure it's going to be an adventure. Thanks for hanging in there with me.
Thank you, and congratulations. You know, you spoke about this being a difficult vote, and I've been involved in politics longer than most of you are old, but I had no idea how this was going to turn out tonight. I have a, very often we'll come into these meetings, and you have a sense about, you know, do we have four votes? This one, I had no idea where the commissioners were. I mean, this, that, that, that. So it was, it was a challenging vote, and a lot of very good people running. I'm going to play the old school teacher. Be cautious of trying to say the fourth person should be the person appointed because what if that fourth person was, "Let's sell Prescott Isle and subdivide it and raise money." Now, you wouldn't be here advocating it, but if you put it someplace in the charter, then you're stuck with it, okay? So I caution you to use that line of reasoning. And I understood that Tony went out, he campaigned, he garnered some votes, and I did say to somebody, I said, "I doubt this commission will go for that theory, but the fourth person may get it, but not because the fourth person would automatically get it because then do you go to the fifth." So the charter, I was on the charter commission when we put that provision in, and it's a decision that the commissioners make, and we didn't want to do a special election because of the cost. But I understood the discussion and the points being made, but be cautious of going down that road. I would hope that many of you would get involved on some of the committees. The committees are very important to us. Before, I didn't think they were, before I got involved, but we read those minutes. We get advice from staff here at the city, and it's important that we have public input. And the picnic rocks thing, it is, it's going to be a challenge. We've got lakeshore, we've got picnic rocks, and we need a substantial chunk of money. And I, the staff has been working very hard, looking for grants, the Corps of Engineers, and it is dangerous. I was down there that morning watching. I heard the wind, so I went down about five or five-thirty, and the police had just arrived, and they were beginning to cordon off the roads. And let's just hope we don't have some more this winter. So, but I want to thank everybody for coming. I agree with Commissioner Stonehouse. We tried to make it very transparent and putting together how we were going to proceed, consulting with our attorney. He didn't always agree with us, and that's not, shouldn't be surprising, but we finally came up with this because he always gets the law and the process in our way. As a matter of fact, just to tell you, in the old days, we went back to do some research, and one of the commissioners had resigned, and so at the meeting, they called the closed session. They went into closed session, they came out, and they said, "I nominate so-and-so. I second it." Boom, and the person was selected. You're not allowed to do that today, and that's probably good. But things were done differently, and I think we tried to be very transparent about it. So I want to thank everybody for taking the time for permitting their name, submitting an application, coming to this sort of session. I mean, as I told my colleagues, on the first vote, three people were going to be eliminated automatically because there were six of us and nine applicants. So three people were not going to receive votes if everybody just submitted one vote for one person. But thank you. Let me turn it over to our city manager.
I honestly don't know what you're talking about. I had a pretty easy night over here.
You didn't have to make the decision, huh?
It's been good. I think Ron actually worked harder than I did for a change. Congratulations, Commissioner. A few notes, a little out of the norm for tonight, but speaking of grants, we did or were awarded our grant for the Williams Park Tennis Courts, which will be completed or the construction, I think, will be on schedule for the summer coming up or next summer coming up. Remind me, Mr. Protem, the tennis group has to come up with a matching fund.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you. I have my community office hours this Wednesday at the Peter White Public Library, ten o'clock. It's a monthly event that I participate in. As a little heads up, the big work for the remodeling of the second floor of City Hall will commence tomorrow. They actually had it scheduled for right now. Thank God, one of the workers mentioned it to me, and I reminded them of this meeting. So the second floor will be in disarray, dust, noise, probably for a good six to eight months, so please bear with us while we go through that. Not to hammer on a point, but the item one E on tonight's consent agenda was a permission to apply for a grant for Shires Park, the picnic rocks area. It's a one-to-one matching grant for one hundred thousand dollars. The staff has been very busy in applying or putting together grants to try to address that problem. I would mention that that park is closed, as all of our parks are during the winter months, so technically, it's not open to the public right now. So if you're out there, it's kind of on your own. Our short-term plan for that area is to do some type of fix, temporary fix, this spring. We thought it best to wait until the spring because if we had done some fixes fall, it might well have been washed away by the springtime. So we will do something temporary for the springtime to get that park open for the summer. I share the concern with having to wait a year or two for grant money to come through, but that's how grants are. Unfortunately, we have to adhere to their timetables. I'll remind the commission, the next Monday before the regular meeting, we have a work session, four fifteen, is it four thirty? I can't remember. Four thirty, where we will be discussing the Lighthouse Park Plan. It's been updated since our last meeting. I've sent, I will be sending the commission tomorrow that plan now that I know who the seventh commissioner is. And by the way, I need your email address. So we will have that work session. That plan will be presented to the commission then for their input. That's all I have in general, but Jenna, I'm going to ask, here's my card. I've got some information on the back, give an email address of my executive assistant who can help you get some things together. We have some administrative things that need to be done, such as a city email address, website information, electronic device. And then the general, you know, we can talk as you get acclimated to what's happening. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Just before we adjourn, I want to thank Chris, our clerk. Matter of fact, she ran off telling you we weren't sure about where we were going to go. She had a hundred ballots in case this thing went on and on, okay? So, but I want to thank her for pulling this together. We stand adjourned. Okay?